This concludes our arringe for tonight. We will now begin our regular school board meeting. Welcome to the Beaverton School District School Board meeting for Monday, June 24th, 2018. Not that anybody's counting, but it's our last meeting of the school year. We also ask that you silence all of your cell phones at this time and take any personal conversations you may have out into the hallway. At this time, I'd like you to all rise and welcome John Fresh, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. And at this time, we'd like to start our recognitions for the evening. And would John please join us up front here?
John Fresh, special education teacher at Westview High School, was named Northwest Regional 2020 Regional Teacher of the Year. Mr. Fresh wins a $500 cash prize and is in the running for Oregon's 2020 Teacher of the Year, which will be announced in September. John has the unique ability to establish positive relationships with students who need it the most. He is seen as an advocate and works relentlessly to find ways for all students to experience success in and out of our classrooms, states Westview High School Principal Matt Peterson. Regional Teachers of the Year are nominated by students, colleagues, administrators, friends or family members to apply for the award, and selected by a diverse panel of regional representatives. In September 2019, one of the Regional Teachers of the Year will be named the 2020 Oregon Teacher of the Year. Thanks to the Oregon Department of Education's partnership with the Oregon Lottery, the 2020 Oregon Teacher of the Year received a $5,000 cash prize, with a matching $5,000 going to their school, and serves as a spokesperson and representative for all Oregon teachers. Three runners-up for the 2020 Oregon Teacher of the Year will receive $2,000 and a matching $2,000 for their school. Best of luck to Mr. Fresh. Congratulations and thanks for representing Beaverton School District.
Well, first of all, I'm completely humbled and honored by this recognition. To be honest with you, when this came to the forefront, I wasn't sure that I was going to do it because it required a lot of work. And in all honesty, I didn't feel that I was probably the audience that they were looking for, having been a special education teacher for 25 years, 21 of those here in Beaverton. But I thought that I have a story that I want to... And looking at the questions, I really felt that if I could manipulate them right, that I could tell my story. And I know I don't have time to tell my story. Someday, I'm going to tell it. But there are just a couple of things that I want to say in reference to the "we expect excellence" in Beaverton. My why was because of a good friend of mine that I had in high school. His name's Bob. Bob's still with us. He has moved away from our area and he lives in Idaho, but we're still staying in touch. Bob's a 54-year-old gentleman now that has cerebral palsy, and over the years became immobile, so he's wheelchair-bound, if not looking even beyond that. Bob cannot communicate very well verbally, but for some reason, he and I can communicate. And in high school, I looked around and recognized that everybody has value. Everybody. And unbeknownst to me, my wife, who is an educator, was enjoying two summers off while I was going to work in a suit. And I said, "There's something wrong with this. I want to go back to school." But I didn't know what I was going to teach. And my wife said, Wendy right there, she said to me, "You enjoy working with the students that have this behavior issues, the addictive issue," and so on. So, long story short, I went back, I got my degree, and I've been working with students that are emotionally disturbed, conduct disorder, oppositional defiant, some that are on the spectrum. And we get each other. That's the only person I can work with. Like Joe, people say, "You've got a hard job." It's like, "Are you kidding? They paid me to do this. This isn't hard." Being a general ed teacher is hard. You've got to go home and grade papers, and we've got to read essays. And so, two things, and then I'm going to be done. Thank you for the time. Two things, three things. Over my time, what I recognize is that the opportunity to meet a new student is my opportunity to learn something about myself that I didn't know. So, I take it very seriously when I receive a new student, and I look into myself and say, "You're being put together for a specific reason. You better use it." We work very hard with the kids about rebel against low expectations and do the hard things. It's far too easy for one of my kids to skip school, cut a class, get upset, and say some inappropriate words to a teacher. They do that very, very well. And so, we work with them, "Do the hard thing. Do something different than that. Let's work on that." And then, the final thing that we implemented this year, it's a program that I partnered with. It's called the Positivity Project. Three simple words: other, people, matter. And so, every day, our focus with the Emotional Growth Center is, "Yeah, you're important, but the person next to you is important as well. So, let's understand that everybody has value, and we can all help each other to the best of our abilities."
(Applause).
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Board members, at this time, do you have any changes to the agenda? Well, we will now move into our first action item. So, would Tom and Eric join me?
So, we have three board members that won an election really hard in the presence of our students. And so, I have the privilege of swearing them into their offices. So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, and I put it in really easy chunks. And when I say your name, you have to say your name, okay? I, your name.
I, Ben.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the Beaverton School District.
And the policies of the Beaverton School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The responsibilities of the office.
The responsibilities of the office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Leanne is our senior member of our board. That was great getting that. Thank you very much. At this time, we welcome public participation. If you would like to address the board, please complete a yellow card, if you've not done so already, and give it to our recording secretaries, Debbie or Mary, here on the corner. We are appreciating listening to your comments. Two, two minutes. You'll see the clock right here behind you for each card. Comments will be heard. Our vice chair, Eric Simpson, here, will be calling your name. He'll call the person that's up and the next one up, so you can make your way forward here. And we will, the board will not address your comments at this time. Someone from the staff or the board will respond to you at a later time. And we really appreciate it if you could keep it to your two minutes. And if you have additional information that you want the board to know, you're welcome to give us a written testimony or send it to us at a later time. So, with that, our first person.
We'll have Lentmtri, followed by Carol Zanos. Hi, Lent.
Hello, thanks for allowing me to speak with you. I wanted to thank the board for your continued support for the Safe at School program.
Kimber.
Thank you. I love that now sound, Erica. Thank you very much. I want to thank you, the board, for your continued support for Safe at School program and the health and safety of our kids and our community. Our grant ends June 30th. We are finally, I see our reports for Metro's Regional Transportation Program, which is our funder, and we will all give you a copy, so you'll see how we did. Three grants have been written to continue the program. Two have been approved, and the third will be announced on August 30th. I will not be reapplying for the position, but do hope a qualified new coordinator can be hired by August to ensure the momentum we've created and worked really hard will continue. I've been able to bring on two colleagues to join me to finish off the grant year, which I was thrilled to do. Jen Anderson has been instrumental in aligning the school green team objectives with the environmental benefits of increased walking and biking. Leah Biado-Lewis used her teaching experience from David Douglas School District to teach over 1,800 students in 45 classes this quarter alone with active transportation and pedestrian and bike safety. Together, we have reached close to 3,000 students in this quarter and had events, sorry, events that celebrated close to 2,200 students walking and biking to school. Again, I'd like to, I'm running out of time, yeah. I would like to thank you, Chair Tindrick, and your board, all of the BSD staff, students, parents throughout the district, for your continuing of looking at Safe at School, because we need to continue to do it. It is for the health and safety of the kids, and I look forward to seeing what the district does. Thank you so much.
Carol Zanos, followed by Trish Kimber.
My name is Carol Zanos, and I'm the parent of five BSD students who have attended five different BSD schools. I presented to the reconsideration committee on June 6th for the reconsideration of the Advocates for Youth 3Rs curriculum. It was clear from the very first round of votes that that meeting was a charade, and there was never any intention to consider removing the 3Rs. While these concerned parents and I have painstakingly read the 3Rs cover to cover, only three members of that committee, other members on that committee, claim to have read the 3Rs. How can a committee judge instructional materials to meet district standards if they have not read the material? Not only that bad, but four of the committee members were from the Health Project team that recommended the 3Rs. Throughout the meeting, they brushed aside our valid concerns by saying that the 3Rs met the learning targets. I've read through the lengthy ODE learning targets, and I dispute that this curriculum meets the targets, especially when it comes to being age-appropriate and medically accurate. 3Rs is not written by medical professionals but by Advocates for Youth, a political activist group with ties to Planned Parenthood. 3Rs encourages risky oral and anal sex and is demonstrably hostile to religion. By voting to implement and retain this curriculum, it is evident to me that BSD is less interested in encouraging our students to make healthy decisions and more interested in turning them into sexually active social activists. At the same time the 3Rs was adopted, the district arbitrarily ruled that the accredited BYU independent study health course was no longer an option, and there are no other viable alternatives than, other than, to opt out. We don't want our children to have to opt out. I thought I could trust BSD to do what is best for our children, but having been through this experience, I no longer trust BSD when it comes to my children's precious health and seriously question BSD's motives. Thank you.
Trish Kimber, followed by Tao Nguyen.
Hi, my name is Trish, and I have 30 years in the criminal justice system, and I won't tell you how awful that was. I'd like to know how many people here have not seen the CSE program materials? It's comprehensive sex education. And I'm also looking around this room, and I'm sure none of you would want to be referred to as sheeple or puppets. Yet, how many in the school board or teachers will be bullied even by the Department of Education program to implement a program your children that is not age-appropriate, like cartoon pornography, X-rated? Would any of you in this room show your kindergarten pornography? Do you want your kids to be hijacked? Do you have the courage to say no? Would you want your kids to attend an X-rated school if you wouldn't want them watching X-rated movies or internet porn? And I'm going to skip down here. Adolf Hitler, that's an ugly name we all know, said, "Give me a child when he is seven, and he will be mine for life." Indoctrination at its worst. Salmonell, a criminologist, said, "Mental rehearsing. Kids will always do what they see other kids do, and they will always mentally rehearse before they commit a crime." I personally had a very ugly crime case that I hate talking about, but I will. A young boy in Charminow, he was 17, saw a young girl jogging in the neighborhood and determined he was going to have sex with her. He went home to get a Boy Scout knife. He went to her door, knocked on the door, pushed his way in. There was a phone on the floor. She was on the conversation with her fiance and Eugene. He heard the whole scenario. She screamed, "No." He tried to rape her. He almost decapitated her. Obviously, she died. He had no recorded priors. He was 17. That's the worst of it. And I want to add one more thing. Washington State has said, "No, we will not do CSE."
Tao Nguyen, followed by Natalie Maxfield.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tao Nguyen, and I'm Vietnamese, by the way. I came here when I was 13 years old. And when I was young, until I was still a teenager, my mom, my parents, never mentioned about sex with all of us. You know, I mean, I think, based on my experience, it's good to talk, to kiss about it, but we have to be smart about it. We just, we have, because everything we do, like my parents, if they don't talk about it, I don't know anything about it. So, I think I speak for my heart. What I've been doing is look on magazines, and I'll be honest with everybody that I'm misguided by the magazine. And, you know, I don't feel like, I don't, you know, because the magazine teaching, anything, everything the magazine teaching is against God law. And I'm Catholic all my life. So, I thank God that God has saved me, because when I'm misguided, I've been away from Him, and I feel like I've been slave of all of those bad things. So, I just suggest that everybody should reconsider, you know, think for all the people before you make any decision, because young children, they just gonna do and listen to adults. And if a good person and a good parent, good teacher, will teach them, good thing that they're going to follow that all their life. So, I just hope that think for all the people before you make any decision. And I don't think, you know, teaching kids sex education at young age is the good thing. But, I mean, you should have to be careful about that.
Natalie Maxfield, followed by Marie M. McKesker.
Superintendent, grilling members of the board and school administrators, I'm grateful to live in a country that allows us to freely voice concerns and differing opinions. I'm grateful for the BSD community and all the diverse culture beliefs and ethnicity that we share. It is crucial that BSD continue to represent and welcome all individuals of diverse families. A few weeks back on June 6th, I sat on the committee of 13 to reconsider the 3Rs curriculum. I was representing over 3,000 parents that disagree with this curriculum. In preparation for that meeting, the district emphasized neutrality would be strived for in selecting committee members. As the meeting was underway, it was clear there were many that were not neutral, including four on the project team, that consistently defended the curriculum they adopted. The others had admittedly admitted to only skimming the curriculum. The voting process was biased as well, with the fiscified voting, fives being counted first with those who were in agreement, potentially influencing peers with the other votes. I knew I had no way of exposing the depth of danger the 3Rs represented. I will tell you of one danger. There's not a balance of teachings throughout the 3Rs curriculum. One example is in ninth grade directing the children to watch a show, I Am Jazz, which is a TV program where a boy transitions with hormones and surgery to female. That is not representing a balanced approach. Here's an example of an alternate point of view. I'll read from his letter. "I'm only in my mid-20s. I transitioned in my teens and had surgery. I was too young to make such a decision. I've sunk into such a deep regret, I don't even feel transgender anymore. I feel like my old self. I feel like I was brainwashed by the transgender agenda and by gender norm expectations. I would do anything to have my penis back. My feelings were confusing, and I thought they would never go away. I'm just a guy who's really in touch with my feminine side. There are two sides of this story, and I encourage BSD should not choose sides." Thank you.
Marie McKesker, followed by Erin Hatch.
Hi, I'm Marie McKesker, and I am an engineer and mother of two boys in the Beaverton School District. I am not religiously related and consider myself moderate belief or political affiliation. I just had a couple of points. First of all, I am embarrassed for those who feel it's appropriate to disparage religion in a curriculum that's supposed to encourage inclusion. I just don't think that's okay. I think that those things can be generically described. I don't think words like religion, old-fashioned, conservative, they don't need to be mentioned. You could say somewhat, they come from a lifestyle that encourages substance. I mean, it just doesn't have to be pointed out. I would like to see curriculums based on science and the golden rule without judgment towards people's personal beliefs. I don't think the beliefs have to play into this. This is teaching, is school. The other thing that really bothered me as I was reading through the curriculum is the treatment of parents and encouraging children to go behind their parents' backs. It sounds suspiciously like, "Don't tell your parents," which is what the pedophiles and child molesters say. You don't have to tell your parents. Don't tell your parents. That's what people who intend harm say. And I feel like by doing that, in, I mean, there are children, obviously, who come from families who are not going to be supportive, and they are going to need extra help. But there are a lot of children out there who have parents who are their biggest supporters, whether they make the decision that the parents want them to make or not. They will be behind them 100% of the way. And those children do not need to be encouraged in their sensitive teen years, when parents are already seen as the enemy, to not go to their parents. And that really, that's something that I feel very strongly about. Please go to the family first, if you can. If not, seek help. And I'm glad that there's help being given to those who don't have that support they need to. Thank you for listening.
Erin Hatch, followed by Wendy Venion.
Thank you. My concerns about the new health curriculum run wide and deep and include age-appropriateness for our children, over-sexualization of children in general, and the unbalanced approach in which the information is relayed. Why do we feel the need to push such controversial material through so quickly? Where were the parent surveys? Where was realistic access to controversial material for review by parents? The implementation of this curriculum is a logistical nightmare for overburdened teachers. As a result of parent backlash, out of the 59 lessons so far, the district has included 31 recommendations to adapt the lesson in an attempt to make them appropriate for our children. Four lessons are recommended to be omitted completely. A number of omissions have been recommended because content does not meet the requirements of the BSD Comprehensive Guide and Health Education Best Practices. This list of recommendations continues to evolve and grow. Teachers will need to wade through a quagmire to figure out what and what not to teach. Most of the scenarios have been recommended to be adapted, to discuss in pairs or small groups instead of in front of the class. While I don't know any youth who would want to act out a sexual conversation in front of a class, I also worry about the teacher adequately monitoring a dozen conversations about sensitive sexual matters that are going on at the same time. Role-playing has value, but why can't consent be practiced outside of a sexual context? I love being a part of the BSD community, and this is the first time I have felt pushed out. Sexual health is an important aspect of our children's education, but having read the curriculum, I can't find anywhere my family fits in. I don't want to feel like my only choice is to opt out. Let's put on the brakes and try again with the new health curriculum. I am confident that as BSD partners with parents, together we can find a curriculum with a balanced view to meet the needs of our diverse community, which is crucial to our well-being. Thank you.
Wendy Venion, followed by Annalee Waddell.
Hi, I'm Wendy Venion. I'm a BSD parent. At first, I'd like to say thank you to the district for the improvements in parental access to health curriculum. We really appreciate all the efforts that have been made. But I also like to address the 3Rs curriculum and how it violates both Oregon state law and BSD policy. According to Oregon state law, 336.455, human sexuality course instruction shall, quote, "Promote abstinence for school-age youth and mutually monogamous relationships with an unaffected partner for adults as the most effective way to prevent pregnancy and the transmission of sexually transmitted diseases. However, abstinence may not be taught to the exclusion of other material and instruction on contraceptive and disease reduction measures," and the BSD echoes this in their stated policies. The 3Rs curriculum is in direct violation of Oregon law and BSD policy, as it does the reverse. Instead of promoting abstinence, the vast majority of the curriculum simply promotes safe sex, and only occasionally mentions that abstinence is the only 100% effective way to prevent unintended pregnancy and the spread of disease. The curriculum includes a very disproportionate number of scenarios of sexually active youth and only a few scenarios of adolescents who are trying to remain abstinent. This serves to normalize adolescent sexual activity and even impliedly encourage it. If you download the lessons from the website and do a text search of the document, you'll find the word "abstinence" occurs only 27 times in the entire curriculum, while abortion term occurs 33 times, Planned Parenthood 29 times, and oral and anal sex a whopping 103 times. The 3Rs curriculum claims to be abstinence-based, but really isn't. So, I really appeal to you, board members, to please take the time this summer to download and read the lessons and see for yourselves. We would love to work with the district to find a suitable alternative that is keeping with Oregon state law and BSD policy of being abstinence-based but still includes instruction on contraception and disease prevention. Please support a balanced curriculum and don't force families to opt out. Thank you.
Annalee, followed by Nikki Minkmo.
I'm Annalee Waddell.
Apologies.
I have four children in the Beaverton School District. I was a parent that's on the reconsideration of instructional materials for the Advocates for Youth that has been mentioned tonight. So, for the past three months, I have been researching learning targets, instructional materials, standards, and educational philosophy of Beaverton School District. I spent hours upon hours reading, researching, sitting in meetings with other, with administrators and other concerned parents. And what I've learned is that the standards and learning targets in some instructional materials are really a stretch for me and my family. As these new targets kind of wash over the community and seeing parents, and some are here tonight, who are struggling to know how to navigate this landscape, let me clearly state that I'm here and we're here, not because we're trying to leave. We're here because we're trying to stay. So, I'm honestly struggling to know how to make So I'm honestly struggling to know how to make this work for my family, and I've come up with kind of a list, a working list, what I need from the district. We need class content, not just learning targets. Proximity to the actual instructional materials so that we know when our kids are going to health class what they're going to hear. If I'm told just what the target is, I have no real idea how it's executed. What are teachers bringing in? They could literally bring in from anywhere, and I would have no idea. I've been burned with this twice. Okay, so I'm getting my dander up a little bit about it, okay? I need some results here. Opt out. I just really quickly want to say, I feel like opting out is the district showing us the door, that there's not a place for us who have more conservative views on sexuality. If you're getting a lot of families opting out, it should signal to you that you need to review these instructional materials in high relief. That's all I got.
Nikki Bingmo followed by Steve Maxfield.
I respectfully ask for adjustments of the proposed health curriculum. In my past and current volunteering employment positions, I've worked with a variety of children, teens, and young adults, positions that range from vice principal of an educational center for boys who have committed crimes of the sexual nature to working with teen and young moms. That being said, I believe in sex education, but I believe that it must be done within the context of understanding teen brain development and the complexities that surround it. As I look over and review the proposed curriculum, I feel that several areas of this curriculum disregard where our teen brains are when it comes to things such as executive functioning and the maturity of the prefrontal cortex. When you work with teens, you learn that the prefrontal cortex is one of the last things to mature, and that's really what helps us make good decisions. I often saw areas of the curriculum that highlighted that teens have the right to proceed with things such as abortion, or that teens do not mean to involve their parents in decision-making when it comes to birth control and sexuality. While I fully understand that some students may not come from an environment where communication is safe or respected, I work within that population. There are many students who are in a home where communication is valued and encouraged. The curriculum seems to remove the parent guardian who biologically should have a mature prefrontal cortex from a conversation that can and will have lifelong consequences. I would rather see more role-playing and talking safely with a parent regarding choices than how we're all playing intercourse with a friend that I just met last weekend according to the curriculum. Role-playing, as the curriculum currently seems to suggest, is not advocating for safe conversations. That's something that should be done within a small group amongst peers that have a relationship with appropriate boundaries outlined not in a large health class, which, according to the budget, may be even larger next year. I also do not see a lot of the curriculum that wraps around how our view of our self-worth affects our ability to choose one date of sex and with whom. It seems to approach and encourage casual sexual relationships, which, in all my time studying sexual abuse, sexual awareness, et cetera, have I seen a study where this casual approach is credited as a positive thing amongst youth. Again, I believe in sexual education, but I respectfully ask that this curriculum is reworked and revamped for mental, emotional, and physical health of our children and of all of our families. Thank you.
Steve Maxfield followed by Ben Waddell.
My name is Steve Maxfield. My wife and I have brought six children into this world, and I've spent countless hours during their infancy feeding them very basic foods, foods they can easily digest. We don't feed them anything that they can chew or that they can't chew because they don't have any teeth. They could literally die. However, this curriculum and the ages of implementation are like giving an infant a big steak. While many of these kids are just starting puberty, we are teaching them ways to have sex, including anal sex, oral sex, and vaginal sex. As mentioned previously, 103 times versus 27 times talking about abstinence, which is only mentioned as an option to prevent pregnancy or STIs. It suggests physically, the curriculum suggests that teachers have the role-play, student role-play, sex consenting scenarios when many of them are not even thinking about sex, including my own 13-year-old daughter. It suggests physically dividing up the room in segments of students based on the student's opinion when they think it's okay to have sex, normalizing the behavior and putting peer pressure that it is okay to be having sex as a teenager. Some of these things are being taught to my 12-year-old, who's going into seventh grade at Meadow Park. They are also being taught to question the body they've been given at birth. These topics are throwing a big stake at developing minds. It will only cause confusion. The board has the power to overturn their decision to approve this Three Rs curriculum, and I ask you today to please be responsible and overturn your decision to implement this curriculum. Thank you.
Annalee Waddell followed by Teresa Nguyen.
Hey, I'm a 15-year-old freshman at Westview, so I'm your case study. So I didn't like doing the role-playing thing. I thought it was disgusting and awkward, and I also didn't like Planned Parenthood coming to our school. I think that's a political move, and I don't think you guys should be doing this. I don't like how prevalent the idea that, I don't like the idea that gender and sexuality are malleable because of biology. I don't like how prevalent it is. I think it ignores the scientific facts that there are significant biological differences between the sexes. I also don't like censorship of opposing viewpoints to this idea. One example of this is when my teacher was making a list of biological differences between the two sexes, and I had the gall to say, "brain chemistry and size," which is basic biology. I think an organization like Planned Parenthood who promotes this ideology, that is stupid, shouldn't be allowed in schools as they threaten some students. I would encourage a revision of sex education to be more scientifically literate and unbiased in any way. This is a political issue, but it shouldn't have to be. I know you guys, basically, you're civil servants. We have elected you, and your job is to serve us. Your salary is paid by our tax dollars, and now I don't personally pay any taxes, but your salary is paid by these people. So as a business, you should appeal to your guys' customers. So fix this.
I'm looking forward to salary for school board. Teresa Nguyen followed by Marge Proctor.
As parents of fortunate who have been going to the Beaverton School District, my husband and I are deeply concerned about the Three Rs, which is sexual education curriculum, sexuality education curriculum. Along with many other parents, we realize that this curriculum is totally unfit for children from K to 12. It installs in the young minds in pure thought and immorality, teaching raw children to involve in various forms of sexuality, sexual activities, with the support of Planned Parenthood. It also teaches minors to perform these sexual acts in secret without parents' knowledge. It even encourages minors to drink and watch pornography against parents' religious beliefs. Finally, the curriculum confuses children about their own gender given at birth. We believe that abstinence is the best teaching method to young minds. We strongly urge the school board to remove the curriculum not only for the benefit of children in the Beaverton School District, but also for the benefit of generation in the USA. Thank you.
Marge Proctor followed by Lisa Richards.
Hi, I'm Marge Proctor. I am no longer a Beaverton School District parent. My older son graduated from Westview a couple weeks ago. I pulled my younger son out to homeschool him three years ago. I had become convinced that the school district did not want to hear about my concerns of the parents. My emails were ignored. I was lied to by a district employee concerning parental notifications, talking about me nowhere, so I pulled my younger son out. I allowed my older son to stay at Westview, but I kept a close eye on things. I'm very concerned that the Beaverton School District approves of the sexualization of young children in this new Three Rs curriculum. You say parents can opt their children out of the curriculum, but let me tell you what happened at Westview when I opted my son out of the Planned Parenthood presentation in his health class. The teacher confronted him and told him that I was weird for doing that. Can you imagine that? I have totally lost faith in the Beaverton School District, and I want to encourage every parent who is disturbed by the recent trends in the district to pull their students out. And if there are any parents that need help homeschooling, I would be happy to do that. Thank you.
Lisa Richards followed by Katie Smith.
Thank you. I'm a parent in the Beaverton School District, and I wanted to add my comments on the health curriculum tonight. It's a short comment, but it's an analogy that I thought of, and if the National Rightful Association wanted to give the Beaverton School District a free curriculum that it had prepared for the 10th grade American Studies class or for social studies, would it be adopted? Absolutely not. The NRA is a divisive organization that has its own agenda. So too is Planned Parenthood. It's a political organization that has no place being in our children's health classrooms. It's never been adopted in the first place, and I would hope that the board could move to adopt a new curriculum. There are many other options that would be age-appropriate and that could take into consideration all the values that reside in our school district. Thank you.
Katie Smith followed by Jason Coward.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Katie Smith. I have four children, two are in the district, enrolled in the district. I came tonight to add my voice in opposition to the Three Rs curriculum. Standard six in selecting a curriculum in the Beaverton School District states that selected materials shall support a balanced approach to controversial issues that will include representation of various points of view, even when those opinions represented are controversial. As you know, the recent committee formed to reconsider the Three Rs curriculum voted that this curriculum doesn't meet the standard, that standard, of being balanced. It doesn't include a balanced view to meet the needs of our diverse community. The Beaverton School District policy states that instruction should never demean any religious beliefs. However, we found several examples throughout the curriculum that do not uphold that policy. In our effort, and in the effort of that curriculum and sex education to include and lift and help specific groups of students, which is a really worthy goal within the Beaverton District, we shouldn't be putting down and demeaning other groups of students. Everyone should be considered and benefited. This curriculum is not a balanced approach for health and sexual education to all of the student body, and I ask that we can try and find something else that does. Thank you.
Jason Coward followed by DeTran.
Good evening. I think I've told you all this before, but I'm inspired to say it tonight. I appreciate all your service. I am here to talk to you, what else boundaries, what else to chat to you about. I'd ask that you not pass the proposed objectives, the middle school boundary process. I have a problem with one objective, which is it recommends a target enrollment is taller for 90% of permanent capacity. That's an extremely aggressive bar to set. I'm too concerned with it. One, the NGL says you have no price tag there. It's almost like saying, "Wouldn't you like a car with better gas mileage, much safer?" Sure, you would, but what's the cost? There's no material there that says, "Here's what that might look like in terms of transition, in terms of the impact on the other things." My own back napkin estimate says that you will have a very hard time keeping the three elementary schools of the five that currently feed into solar all going in there. You would have to introduce a split if you were going to strictly adhere to that. I'd also just encourage you to think about, you're going to form a committee of the community to provide their input. Let them provide that input and that perspective without preapplying a filter that says, "By the way, enrollment capacity is going to be our number one choice." Let them give you their opinion on how they want to balance, but it's always inevitable trade-off between proximity and capacity. And then very quickly, I will say, aside from that one change in recommendations, I would encourage you, encourage the staff, to spend the next few months taking a hard look on whether we need and can afford an additional comprehensive middle school. I'm not suggesting, I'll tell you my ideas in the break, but there's a unique opportunity to avoid an unpleasant boundary process and a lot of heartache that might otherwise go through a school closing if you combine the two. Thank you very much.
DeTran followed by Joanne Gallagher.
I'd like to take a few seconds of my time to as a prayer. Dear God, thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to the board member today. Please bless them and give them the joy, happiness, and the open-minded listen to the right decision for the benefit of our children. Especially give me the strength to advocate for the right thing. Amen. First, thank you, the board member, for your sacrifice and your time to be the board and help the school. I congratulate you on setting your goal to be, "We collaborate. We expect excellence." Yes, I do expect you guys to be excellent and collaborate. My name is DeTran. I'm the software architect. I have four children with the Beaverton School District. We came from Vietnam in 91 as political immigrants, and we have values as the Vietnamese families. We are very family-oriented, very friendly, and very religious. My family is Catholic for many generations. We train our kids every single weekend. My kids go to Lanang School, study Bible, Vietnamese language, and they behave that way. We volunteer a lot in the community, and we are trained a lot, work very hard. As you can see, my family is adapting and excelling with the community. Why I ask Three Rs, I would like you to eliminate Three Rs, eliminate it, replace with a health program that's not sexual-focused, because all items in the program complement with my belief, with my family belief and my children belief. Thank you.
Gallagher followed by Marie McCusker.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Gallagher. It's okay. I have trigger finger and I can't write anymore, so you did pretty well. Thank you so much for listening to me tonight. I was a citizen and resident of Beaverton when we very first moved here from New York City. So that's where we started, was in Beaverton, and now we live in Tigard. And at the present time, I am the Executive Director of Parents' Rights in Education. You've heard from a lot of parents this evening, and they're concerned about their rights. They want to feel that their children are safe in the public schools. This is a nonprofit, a national nonprofit organization, and we're committed to the protection of parents' rights in public schools. The sexuality curriculum in question is dangerous. It is fraught with inappropriate content from a medical and psychological perspective. Parents throughout our nation are frustrated and they're angry because they want to be a part of the public school community, but these local schools are not accommodating them, the majority. Instead, a minority has succeeded in demanding biased curriculum. Our curriculum should not be biased in any way. I know you agree with that precept. We, I personally, hear from parents all over this country. We have a large presence because they hear parents' rights, and they think, where can we go? Who can help us? Their children have already suffered from misleading and harmful information. And in Oregon, not too long ago, we had a case where pure sexual assault took place. I strongly urge you to reconsider the three Rs in light of the fact that you may not be ready to deal with the lawsuits that are coming. Parents are, they are going to take those steps, so thank you for your time this evening.
Marie McCusker, last one.
I'm sorry to come up here a second time, but I feel like we'd be doing the school district a disservice by not advocating for my son's second-grade teacher last year, Angela Vargas, whose job is in jeopardy due to the budget cuts, I feel like, especially in light of talking about inclusion. She was a role model for inclusion and on a daily basis built a strong community with her children and just taught them to love and respect each other regardless of where they came from. Like I said, daily basis, and in addition to academics, she did so much hands-on learning, so much teaching through the community. I mean, these kids put together a proposal that they took to multiple levels to do a friendship parade, to role model to the school the importance of this inclusion, and they did so much work on that. I mean, there were reports written, there were presentations given, there were parade props made, there were things given out to students to help remind them that they're all part of this important community, and I feel like it would be really sad if she wasn't there to propagate this learning in the future. Thank you.
I thank you all for coming tonight and participating. And now we're going to move on to our reports, and first up is from Superintendent Grady.
Well, I want to thank all the staff, teachers, parents, board members. We just, in the last few weeks, had thousands of students graduate from Beaverton High Schools, and it was great to watch them and their accomplishments as they walked across the stage. And as John so eloquently put, in public schools, we take all, all students regardless of how they come to us and move them to an optimal place in their life, so that was exciting, exciting time. Also on the budget, I want to thank BEA, I want to thank our community, especially thank our business department for the work that they've done in a very short time. Interim CFO Jim Scherzinger has come in and is really working with our staff and different departments, and we believe we have a finalized budget put together for the board to vote on. Also want to thank the board and other budget committee members for your work. I know it was a very tough time, but thank you for your dedication, and as Eric said, I will double your pay next year. For those who don't know, board members do not, they do not receive any funding. Also was able to attend a Golden Grad Ceremony in Beaverton. For those who might not know what that is, that's for classes that come back and you have had to graduated from Beaverton High School 50 years and more. I was able to meet a 1936 graduate who is 100 years old, Mrs. Wheeler was there, and that was amazing. And the class of 1969 came in, and just a few facts for you, in 1969, you could build a new house for $15,000. Beaverton, car cost about $3,000. Down the gas was 35 cents, man walked on the moon, and the average income in Oregon at that time was about, annual, annual income was about $5,800. So I like to have some of it and not have some of it, so. Also, I want to let the board know, and thanks to operations and TNL, we received word from TriNet that Beaverton, for the first time ever, will receive TriNet passes in the amount of $160,000. And also be for a lot of our students to access buses and to be able to go in different places, whether it's in Beaverton and down to Portland. And normally, we had to pay for some of those passes. They go to our homeless students and all our special education students, other students that are struggling financially. Also, we have word that we received a grant from the Children's Institute for Professional Development for the work we're doing in early childhood education. I want to especially thank board members for being part of that. Sarah, I see you there. You went a long ways, and so that's going to be professional development, not only in the area of early childhood education, but also social-emotional learning. And not only our pre-K folks will be able to learn from that, but some of our K- through devices. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Next up is our financial update. CFO Scherzinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members, other members of the board. You have in front of you a financial report based on the period ending in May, and this is really an important one because it's the last one before the fiscal year ends. And so we have to do a really careful job of forecasting expenditures to be sure that the budget that we've adopted exceeds the amount that we actually spend, because it's against the law to spend more money than you've appropriated. It's not against the law to run a deficit, but it is against the law to spend more money than you've approved. And so in doing the forecast this time, there were maybe three big changes. Number one, a lot more work went into it. Secondly, it was done with a range of estimates, there's sort of a high range and a low end of the range. We want to be sure that the budget is at the high end of the range, because again, the risk is all that you go over it, and you don't want to do that. So the numbers you're looking at here are up from last month, but part of that reason is that we're kind of pushing them up to the high end of the range, so that you will see later today a supplemental budget for this year to get expenditures proved up to this level. We don't think that they're actually going to come to that level, they'll be somewhat below that, but we want to be sure, and this budget is very, very tight. And I guess the last thing I'd say about it is, when you look at the way these projections were done, in some cases, we got a very hard number, but for the rest of them, the way that it's done is to take, look at the last three years and say, well, what happened in the month? It looks like one more month, and for some things, it is one more month, but for many other things, it's two more months or even longer because of the accrual periods for expenditures and when expenditures normally take place. And when you look at the history, it's very volatile. And so the tendency has been to sort of err on the upside, because it's just not a clear pattern. And we had a lot of conversation about how we can get some more stability at the end of the year, and I think there were some things that we can do and think through and consider to make it a little more stable at the end, but for now, we have to live with it the way it is. So that's where these numbers come from. The forecast that's here is 2.6 million over what the last budget was. I think that Chair pointed out to me, we've done two supplemental budgets already this year, and it's true. One of them was a pretty technical one, but the other one was one, and it didn't increase, I don't think it increased total expenditures, it just shifted money around, but the other one did, and you all know the reasons for that. And this is another bump up a little bit, to be sure that we get within the parameters. So I think that's the gist of where these numbers come from, and that's the reason that proposal is before you. The rest of the report is the same format that you've seen, and if you have any questions about any of that, I'd be glad to address it.
Are there any questions? I have one.
Oh, good.
We did discuss that this was an additional supplemental budget in the other school districts or meeting with other business managers. Is this a typical practice of having a supplemental budget?
It is a very normal practice at the end of the year, certainly to do the analysis, and very often, you end up actually proposing one. Actually, based on your question, I had done a little research on this district, and in fact, it was a pretty common practice here as well. But the one thing that I noticed was that in the past, when we've done this, there was additional revenue that covered it, so you didn't have to reduce the, it didn't reduce the ending balance going forward, because you were drawing from that additional revenue to cover the increased expenditures. And if you look at this, at these numbers here, you'll see that the revenue forecast, the actual revenue that's going to come into the district this year is actually less than was budgeted. Not very much less, but still less. And so we're doing a deep dive into that. I think I mentioned it at the Budget Committee, that we are committed to come back with a complete analysis as to what really happened from the budget, from the adoption of the original budget to actuals, which we don't actually know actuals probably for another month and a half. But we're actually working on it now, and then we'll just adjust it to the final numbers. But we're going to come back with a complete analysis of what exactly happened on revenues, because actually, some of them came in higher and some of them came in lower, even though it's flat from a total perspective. And then, secondly, why did the expenditures come in so much higher than the original budget? And actually, we're making some good progress on that, that report. It's not ready for prime time yet.
So that leads me into my second question as far as what kind of things, when we're not, we don't have a full board meeting in the month of July, we'll come back in August with a board session, what kind of things can we put into place, or will you and your business team put into place to do that deep dive?
So, I mean, we're half done with it already, and essentially, what it is, is to, first of all, document, document what happened during the year. That is, here is the budget we started with, here is where we think we're going to end up, and what alarms were raised, because there were some where problems were identified during the year. What did we do about them? And then, what other things do we know that happened that were not anticipated in the budget? Like, for example, implementing the equity pay was not something that was even anticipated in the original budget. So we're well, well, actually, we're pretty well done with that part of it. And then, it's, the next step is, beyond laying it all out, is then attacking each particular element and see if we can find documented where each one of these numbers came from, and then account for all the variation. Some of the, some of the things that we know happened account for some of the variation, but there's some variation that's left that's not accounted for, so we have to keep digging until we can explain, at least within reason, the, all the variation that we have. And so that's, we're just right in the middle of that now. And actually, it's sort of mixed in with this whole process of going through how the projection, how the original budget model worked, and what steps were taken in that model. And as I learn more about how that model works and see where the, how things were actually done, that gives a lot of clues as to what actually happened and why. But like I say, I think we're about halfway through that. And it's, you know, I think by the time that you're back in August, we should have a really good answer.
Thank you so much. With that, we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back at 8 o'clock. We're going to turn the show over to you, Dr. Bridges, first, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Grady, members of the board. Our latest charter is supposed to propose a few amendments to the charter. Kaminsky, the interim principal, he's the last few days off the job, isn't he? Krista, the chair of the board, I'd like to thank them both for their service to the school and to our students. Krista's done a fantastic job, as you know, securing the building. The interim principal has been hired for next year, and I just want to thank them both. If you're here to answer any questions, if there's something that's unclear or that you're confused about, you know, what's in the background.
So could somebody just give us the broad strokes?
Oh, broad strokes. So the school has evolved since the last renewal of the charter adding kindergarten, and also the state has evolved with the addition of instructional minutes requirements for PE. So originally, when the school was founded, there were not separate instructors, it's not a separate instructor for PE, and so PE was conducted in Spanish. Now, there's a dedicated teacher for PE, and that instruction is in English, which has changed the ratio of primary students are receiving instruction in English and in Spanish. At the same time, the school launched kindergarten this year for the first time with that same ratio of 75% English, 75% Spanish, and 25% English on reflection and thinking about staffing concerns, and jump in if I'm not getting this right. They'd like to adjust the ratio so kids in kindergarten have more Spanish instruction so that they're able to have a strong foundation in Spanish and can transfer that in later grades as they phase from 80/20 Spanish-English ratio in kindergarten to a 50/50 ratio in grade six through eight. And then, second amendment is around staff qualifications, that there are specifications about qualifications of teaching staff, but the charter was silent about the qualifications of instructional staff, and the school was proposed to add in the charter requirements for their instructional assistants, their staffing, classes conducted in English or classes conducted in Spanish, in terms of proficiency of those staff.
Could either of you want to add anything else?
No, John did very well summarizing it, as he said on interim, and I do want to give a moment of thanks to the superintendent and all of the executive officers that helped put on the leadership meetings for principals. I feel very honored to be part of that, and I wanted to give a special thanks to John. He's been a great person to be our liaison with the district, and a lot of wonderful support from the district. Thank you very much from all, to all the members of the staff. But back to the point about the amendments, John's right on. I don't need to repeat what he said. I'm looking forward to amending this living document and adjusting to our goals, our leaders' goals, to have a really robust Spanish immersion program, and yet, change with the times because of the PE requirement minutes and other changes that have happened.
Are there any questions for the board? Anne?
I'm curious, if I was a student or a family, would I notice a change in practice based on these rules, or is this basically codifying what you've already got in place?
Sort of codifying what's in place, there wouldn't be any change in practice. I'm very excited about offering 80/20 in the kindergarten program. Because of the items that John outlined, instructional minutes and PE, it's been very difficult to meet the original document, which said 25, 75% Spanish. difficult to meet the original document, which said 75, 25, 75% Spanish and 25% English. We have ELA program, we have PE program, and it's just, it's been very difficult to meet that. So now, by changing it to 65/35, we can, our charter will be meeting, we always want to have more immersion, but we can actually be much more appropriate in what we're actually delivering and what the students are getting, if that answers your question.
I would say for kindergarten, they are getting increased, but the English classes will be shortened to give them more Spanish.
Any other questions? I just have one, just a reminder, the board will be voting on this later this evening. And it is our responsibility to, not to oversee how you run your school. That is not our job, but it is our job to accept your charter. And I just want to know if, how this went over with your own staff and community.
May I talk about the staff first? The staff is very much interested in, once again, being true to what we're delivering day-to-day, minute-to-minute at the school. And they're very excited about the increasement in kindergarten immersion. So the staff is very excited about it. And Krista can talk about how our board responded and members of our adults.
We have not received any feedback from any parents. We not only have our public meetings, but we also actually do the Zoom conferencing. So parents can actually Zoom in instead of just listening. So they have the opportunity to feedback. And we've discussed this several times at several different meetings. I have not ever received a single comment from any of the parent community, unfortunately. It's always good to get feedback, go to the net, I'm the way, but I have not seen anything from them.
All right. Good, thank you so much for coming this evening. Appreciate the presentation. All right. Onward to action. First up is the adoption of the 2019-2020 budget, Resolution 18-62-4A. CFO, you're singer, you join us again.
The committee has a draft in front of you, the resolution to adopt the 2019 budget in addition to the safety. Very quickly, the budget you adopt by law requires that you set it out as appropriations, sort of in the format that it shows on that second page. So you appropriate funds at a much higher level than the actual budget is written. So the budget, you get in this big budget document that goes in very, very detail about how the money is spent. But the actual legal document that you approve is appropriations that, within each of the funds, at the levels that you show there. And these should match the totals at each point in that big, huge budget document. And I think you, in the Budget Committee, you saw a proposed, a revised proposed budget and then some adjustments to that revised proposed budget that were outlined. And that those, all of those documents that you got then roll up into these, to this appropriate, these detailed appropriations. You will get a big, huge budget document that ultimately, that will ultimately print, and there are pages of this are coming out, I saw much of them today, that will then show the same level of detail that you saw in the proposed budget, in the revised proposed budget. It's just because of the timing of how short this is that we don't have all that, the big, huge document done. But it, this does reflect the presentations that were made and the comments you heard at the Budget Committee last Monday. And then you also, in this resolution, are approving the imposition of the property taxes that are needed to balance the budget. And there are really three. There is the permanent rate tax of $4.69, $4.693 dollars per thousand of value, the dollar and a quarter local option tax, and the amount of 62 million, 62.5 million debt service that's needed to pay the debt that's coming due this coming year for the capital construction general obligation bonds. And so that's the resolution on the budget.
I move that we adopt the proposed budget of, for 2019 and '20, as listed in Resolution Number 19-624A, and making the appropriations as listed and imposing the tax at the rate of $1,000 of assessed value of 4.6930 for permanent tax rate, at the rate of $1,000 of assessed value of $1.25 for the local option tax, and in the amount of $62,517,834 for debt service for general obligation bonds. I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the budget for 2019-20, making appropriations and imposing taxes. Is there any discussion upon the motion? Seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor of passing this budget signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Now, would you like to move into the supplemental budget, please?
So before you, you have the supplemental budget proposal. It essentially does two transfers, one set of transfers within the general fund and another within the workers' comp fund. Within the general fund, it, we have identified some lower expenditures in facilities, in the facilities acquisition and construction appropriation, that is within the general fund and in the debt service appropriation. So we are taking $200,000 from that, from the facilities, and 550 from the debt service, and putting that into instruction, and then taking 2.35 million from contingency up into instruction, and then 300,000 from contingency into support services. The figures behind these shifts are reflected in the financial report that I gave earlier about a half hour ago. And that's the, though, as I said, on those, we have a projection. This is sort of the high end of the projection, and it would come, we don't really believe it's going to come in this high. So we should have a beginning balance that's a little bit better than this would imply. But we do believe that we need it at this level to be sure that we make it within the amount appropriated. On the workers' comp fund, there's 200,000 shifted from contingency up into support services. This is really driven by one potential claim that we're getting on the workers' comp side. And again, it's sort of a high-end number. It's, so we don't expect that all, that the ending balance will be dropped by that amount. But we do, we do need to shift some money in that fund in the event that that claim comes in in the fiscal year.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-624B to adopt the supplemental budget and make the appropriation transfers as listed. I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board approves attached Resolution 19-624A to adopt the supplemental budget and make appropriate transfers. Is there any discussion upon the motion? Tom?
After we've adopted the supplemental budget, what will be left in reserve?
So, well, within the 19-20 budget, we have a contingency of 25 million in the general fund. And we have left in the rainy day fund about 3.8 million. So if you add those two numbers together, that's what the budget plan says. If the carryover from the last year, from this year, I guess we're still in this year, the carryover from this year comes in less than the beginning balance that's assumed in the budget, then that would have some impact on the amount of that reserve. You know, that can, I don't believe that's going to be more than a million dollars. So you would still, you would reduce those numbers appropriately. We did actually shift, we actually did reduce the, and that was in the discussion of, at the budget meeting, of next year's budget. We adjusted the beginning balance down a bit, within the same total revenue parameter because we found, because we knew this potential was here, and we identified some additional revenue in that next budget. And we talked briefly about that at the budget hearing. So there is a chance it will come in somewhat less. I don't believe the difference would be more than a million.
Do you have a sense for what, if we were meaning the GFO standard of two months of operating expenses, what that would be next year?
So the budget's about, it's about a little bit under 500 million. So you divide that by, well, let's see, quicker times too, divided by six, 400 and four, let's just say, was it 490 million, something like that? Divided by six. So it's about 82 million, 83 million.
That's okay. Mind if I come out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
Are there any other questions? I need to redo my motion because I read it incorrectly. And so I'll need another second after I redo this. It is recommended the school board approve Resolution 192-624B to adopt the supplemental budget and make appropriate transfers.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Next order of business is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with the Beaverton Education Association. You will see here that we have come to a settlement on a year one and a year two compensation with a step and a 1726 insurance cap. And year two, the insurance cap to be determined, and a COLA of 2.25, and the COLA for year two to be determined. And there is also a summary of the contract language of Article Two and Article Four. Article Two being the association rights and responsibilities and the leave for president and vice president. And Article Four, the grievance procedures. And Article Eight, the employee rights and responsibilities. And Article Nine, safe learning environment. And Article Ten, professional working conditions. And Article Eleven, the work year. And Article Thirteen, layoff and recall. And Article Eighteen, with compensation. And there's also an appendix.
I move that the board approve the collective bargaining agreement that was intended to be reached, that is effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2021, as listed in the board book. I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we set the terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the school board and the Beaverton Education Association for the period of July 1, 2019, through July 30, 2021, and it be ratified by the school board of the Beaverton School District. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, discussion, call for question. All those in favor of the collective bargaining agreement signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Next up is school board objectives for middle school boundaries. And, don't be superintendent me, will you be representing the group?
I am, thank you. So this looks very familiar to you from last month. There are a couple of amendments, and you'll see those amendments in Items Two and Four. And that was based on conversation and discussion with the board last month.
I just have a comment. I appreciate that we put in a goal for solar capacity. I know that that was in response to some comments of mine and concern that if we did not have a target, that the pressure to not relieve solar overcrowding would be overwhelming. So I just wanted to pay the staff's attention to reminding us that, you know, the point of building the new middle school was to relieve gradus solar, and that we have codified that. Thank you.
I move that we approve the listed board objectives to initiate the middle school boundary adjustment process. I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the school board approves the listed objectives to initiate the middle school boundary and adjustment process. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the listed board objectives to initiate the middle school boundary and adjustment process signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? We are asked as a board to vote on the Northwest Regional ESD Board of Directors position. It's Zone Number Five, and it represents the Aloha, Southridge, and Westview High School attendance area. And this term will begin on July 1, 2019, and go until June 30, 2023. And the person that is applying and running for reelection is Karen Cunningham. And she will be, is currently serving in that position, is reapplying for this term.
I just want to say before I make a motion that Karen Cunningham was one of our fellow board members for many years, and she has been a great public servant to the Beaverton community and has done a really nice job representing on the ESD board. So I move wholeheartedly that we approve Karen Cunningham as the Zone Five member of the ESD board. I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. The Beaverton School Board cast their vote for Karen Cunningham, who will serve in Zone Five on the Northwest Regional ESD Board. Is there any discussion? I will just say that I concur with Board Member Larson. Any further discussion with that? All those in favor of casting a vote for Karen Cunningham for the Zone Five on the Northwest Regional ESD signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Next up is the election of the school board chair and vice chair for 2019-20. The office of the school board consists of a chair and a vice chair. The term of office for the chair and the vice chair shall be 12 months, from July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. And the board recognizes the statute allows a member to be elected for up to four successive one-year terms. In event that the current board chair and vice chair leave the board, the senior most board member will provide leadership until the elected board elects a new officer. Are there any nominations?
Yes. It is with great pleasure that I come before you this evening to nominate Becky Timchuck to the position of board chair. I want to recognize her efforts on the levy campaign resulting in its passage, her lobbying efforts at the state legislature, the countless visits she makes to district schools, her ability to remain ability to remain cool under pressure, plus her integrity, honesty, reliability, and commitment to the role. We are fortunate that she's decided to serve for another year. I move that we elect Becky Timchuck as the next Beaverton School Board Chair.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that Becky Timchuck be elected the school board chair. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Now the nominations are open for vice chair. Anne?
I want to recognize that although I concur wholeheartedly, this is, I'm actually channeling Susan Greenberg, who was unable to be here with us tonight. She asked that I put forward the nomination of Eric Simpson as vice chair of the school board for next year. And in so doing, these are my own comments. Over the, the years that Eric has served, beginning his fifth year on the board next year, I, my observation is that Eric is a quiet and engaged leader. In addition, he is a learner and eager to know what it is that we can do best for students and other members of our district. He has served valiantly in roles that others do not covet, such as on the audit committee, which is a good time for anyone who is looking for something extra to do with accountants, as well as faithfully serving on the bond advisory committee. He has been a longtime volunteer in the community and as such, and he is well in tune with student, teacher, community, and business needs and represents our district well in those. I also want to take the time to make a shout out. This year, I know he was able to present the first scholarship to his seventh student, I believe, in honor of his mom. And I think that's a great tribute and example of the kind of things that Eric does without a fanfare, letting people know what he does. So with that, I'd like to nominate Eric as vice chair.
I second the motion. It's been properly moved and seconded that Eric Simpson serve as vice chair of the school board. Is there any discussion? That said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Congratulations, Eric.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. That said, are there any individual school board member comments, the last of the year?
I just have one.
Connor?
I am just happy that we were able to end the school year without having any classified, licensed, or administrator layoffs. So I think that is awesome. So while we may not be where we want to be because we did have to cut some beloved programs, we're probably in a better place than we could have been. As Vivian Green said, life isn't about waiting for the storm to pass. It's about learning how to dance in the rain. And dance in the rain we did. I want to thank you, teachers, classified staff, parents, students, and members of the community for remaining engaged and reminding us what it's all about. It's about our students, it's about our teachers, it's about our community, and I'm really proud to serve in Beaverton. So thank you all.
Any other comments? I will just say that there was lots and lots of end of the year activity and it was great to have the opportunity to be in so many schools and see end of the year projects, whether they be passages at Springdale or IB English final presentations at Southridge or meeting with the Westview Abbot Ciski group with a great teacher, Patrick Curry, getting those students to learn about abbottacy and learning what it's like to be involved in the community. And meeting with a group of students about the importance of recognizing what hate speeches and what we can do about it. To PYP presentations at Hyton, Abbott breakfast, all around this district, there were great things going on at the end of the school year and we have a lot of great things to celebrate as well as all of us being able to participate in graduation. And, you know, I will say for one, that's one of the main reasons you do it is being able to shake their hand and look at them and see what a great future they have. It makes you feel that great to be a part of a successful school district. So with that, we will, yes, I'm gonna, I'm going to let you say something and then I will, I will end.
Just real quick, COSA conference was last week and we were fortunate, we had Vice Principal of the Year from Stoller, Tao Do William, and also our own HR director, Sue Robertson there, won the Bev Glatter Award. And I guess Bev Glatter used to actually be a teacher in this district. Am I being that right?
Administrator.
And an administrator in this district. So, and just along the lines of reiterating what Donna said, a big shout out to our contract corner in our HR department. They've been working day and night to make sure that people were placed properly with their licensure. I know we worked with VEA, we worked with others and really tried to make so that nobody actually got a pink slip. There will be some transfers and that'll be difficult for some people, but the bottom line is people will have jobs and we were able to maintain some of our young teachers, probationary, temporary, Pro One, Pro Two teachers, Pro Three teachers, and these are outstanding folks. So we're happy to keep them and look forward to next year.
And I would just like to end on a note. I thank my fellow board members for your confidence in electing me to a second year. It has been a learning curve for me and I haven't gotten everything right and I appreciate your patience and your support. It means a lot and thank you for that confidence to do that. I thank all of you for the role that you have played this last year. It's not leadership. It is all of us how we step up and we are leaders, whether it be chairing a committee or being a part of bargaining or being a part of the budget. All of us have a role to play in the leadership and it is an honor to serve with all of you. And I hope that we all get a few weeks rest and relaxation and come together again to plan for next year. And I want to thank the staff. It's a tough year, whether it be Jim, thank you so much for coming on and stepping in as CFO, and human resources, and all, all the work that had, had to be done.